This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Parsons, you on?
Thank you. In light of the 2020 COVID-19 virus and current guidance regarding physical distancing to reduce the potential for spread, meetings of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commissions have transitioned to a virtual format. Regional public bodies were granted authority to conduct meetings pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and related legislation approved by the General Assembly of Virginia during the period of the governor's state of emergency declaration for COVID-19. While we do not know the exact duration of the current practice of electronic meetings, we will continue to function in this manner until such time as it is deemed appropriate to return to in-person meetings. Staff provided notice of this meeting and the means by which we are virtually gathered to members of the public on September 21st, 2020 through electronic posting on the Plan RVA website and email distribution of notice to members, alternates, and known interested parties, including the media. This meeting is being recorded. Recordings of the meeting and materials will be posted on the Plan RVA website within 48 hours of this meeting. Any member of the public participating as an observer during the meeting today may submit comments or questions at any time during the meeting via email at rrtpoinput@planrva.org or by using the online chat function on the meeting platform. Those individuals who are observing by phone may be called upon to share questions or comments. This meeting agenda includes opportunities for members of the public to address the body. All comments and questions submitted during the meeting will be reviewed following the meeting, and to the extent practical, responses will be provided or posted on the Plan RVA website. We ask that everyone identify themselves first when speaking so we can more accurately record the activities of the meeting. All lines may be muted to minimize additional noise and feedback, and you may unmute your line at any time to request acknowledgement from the chair. Staff will be monitoring the chat functions throughout the meeting to assure we do not overlook anyone wishing to participate as appropriate in the discussion. Does anyone have any questions regarding the process for assuring effective facilitation of this meeting or for how members of the public may participate? I will now ask our clerk to certify we have followed the approved procedures for appropriate notice of this meeting and the means by which we are convening.
Good morning. This is Nicole Mueller, and I certify that we have followed the approved procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Please indicate your presence by saying aye when your name is called during a roll call. Anyone who wishes to identify themselves following the roll call of members will be invited to do so.
Thank you. Before I take attendance for a roll call for attendance, I'm going to go ahead and just say the Pledge of Allegiance. Feel free to join me if you would like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the legit stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll go ahead and take attendance by roll call. Charles City County, Mr. Coda. Chesterfield County, Mr. Carroll.
Aye, here.
Mr. Holland. Mr. Holland, I believe you are here with us.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I can hear you now. Thanks. Mr. Winslow.
Here.
Ms. Haley. City of Richmond, Mr. Addison. Ms. Gray.
Here.
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch. Ms. Newbell.
Here.
Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Jones. Ms. Larson. Ms. Robertson. Goochland County, Mr. Lumpkins. Mr. Spoonhauer.
Here.
Mr. Kilduff. Ms. LaScalle. Hanover County, Mr. Davis.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Flag.
Flag.
Ms. Pritchard.
Ms. Pritchard.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Brennan.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller. Mr. Evelyn. Powhatan County, Mr. Nordvig. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Sardine. Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Ms. Barnhart. Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rudlich. GRTC Transit System, Ms. Tim.
Present, here.
Ms. Adams. Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean. Secretary of Transportation or Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Mr. Riblet.
Aye.
CTAC, Mr. Basham. Mr. Martin. DRPT, Mr. Brule.
Aye.
Ms. Dubinsky.
Aye.
Federal Highway Administration, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Duran. Federal Transit Administration, Mr. Konick. Ride Finders, Ms. Tisdale.
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin. Virginia Department of Aviation, Mr. Burnett. Madam Chair, this concludes the attendance by roll call.
Thank you so much. Under administration on our agenda, we will move to item number one, which is approval of our policy board meeting agenda. Do you have any revisions, changes, or deletions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, David Williams, I move for approval.
Second. You have a second?
Andreas, Addison.
The movement properly, second, that we approve the meeting agenda. Nicole, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. The board will now be voting on Agenda Item A1, approval of today's meeting agenda. Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Aye.
Mr. Winslow.
Winslow.
Mr. Winslow, could you unmute yourself, please? Okay, Mr. Winslow lost audio. Moving on, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Mr. Addison.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
Secretary of Transportation or Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for Item A1.
Thank you. Item A2 is approval of September 3rd, 2020 policy board meeting minutes. Any deletions, revisions?
Does Pat O'Bannon move for approval?
Can I have a Peterson's second?
I moved it properly, second, and we're about to second, and we're voting for a minute of September the 3rd. Nicole, will you poll the members, please?
Yes, ma'am. The board will now be voting on Item Number A2, approval of the September 3rd meeting minutes. Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Aye.
Mr. Winslow. I believe he still may be having technical difficulties. Moving on, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Mr. Addison.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
Secretary of Transportation or Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
This concludes roll call for Item A2.
Nicole, looks like Mr. Williams is back, or Mr. Winslow, I'm sorry.
Mr. Winslow, can you hear us now? Can you tell us?
Yeah, I can, and I vote aye, and I apologize, I just lost volume there in the middle of the meeting. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item A3 is our public comment period. Have we received any kind of notification or questions from the public? Comments?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Okay, we will be closing our public comment period. Chair's report is Item A4, and this morning I have nothing new and exciting to bring to you all. Wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your assistance during my chairship of this body, and just to understand that I'm hearing three other boards, so some of the, some things are alike and some things are very different, so I thank you all for your assistance in helping me to accomplish this in excellence. So, as we move on, I thank all of you for your patience as we go through yet again another meeting of, another virtual meeting, and thank goodness we have Mr. Parsons and Nicole that are working on a new format, which he will inform us in very shortly as he gives us our secretary's report. So, Mr. Parsons, with that being said, I will turn it over to you, Item A5, the secretary's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are here to serve. I would bring you to the screen if you're able to see it. There are a number of items to bring to your attention for today's secretary's report, and I will start with our current work efforts. So, we are having a presentation and update from SLAB RAL on our staff on the Connect RVA 2045 Long Range Plan later this morning, so I will leave the excitement for that to SLAB. We have completed the Greater RVA Transit Vision Plan, Near Term Strategic Technical Analysis, and we're very excited about the outcomes of that and the participation that we received for that project, and look forward to using the outcomes to help inform the decision-making process for the CBTA as well as our own long-range planning efforts as we complete our long-range plan later this year. On the bicycle pedestrian alternative modes front, the Ashland Trolley Line Study, as well as the regional bicycle pedestrian plan update, are moving along very well, and we are excited about continuing to work with each of you as our local government member partners to make the bicycle ped plan update as worthwhile as we can, and that includes lots and lots of data and coordination at a local level. The team is putting together some great maps and geographic data showing all of the opportunities for alternative travel around the region, and through that process, we're going to identify the gaps, which is the important thing for us to consider, is where the need's going to be to make sure that that network is the best it can be. Especially of note, on the Ashland Trolley Line Study, it's slow-going right now because of COVID and the situation at our universities, but we have had conversations with Virginia Tech and are excited about having their Landscape Architect Studio classes this fall, helping out our team in coming up with some conceptual renderings for the Trolley Line Trail. So, there should be updates later this fall on any progress that we receive there, and again, that's really dependent on classes being able to meet and the students being able to devote the time they need to this project, but that's in the works. Our Active Transportation Work Group is continuing to meet as needed, and as you can see here, the September meeting had an update from Thomas Ruff of the Timmins Group on Chesterfield County Sidewalk Implementation Plan, so great to hear from Chesterfield about what the progress is on the implementation plan and where that's going in the future. Staff is continuing to work with Henrico County's Active Transportation Work Group to provide a regional resource to that group as decisions are made to impact Henrico's future. Smart Scale Round Four, applications are in, and I know that BDOT is working around the clock to assess the applications now. We do have a great portfolio of projects that were submitted from the Richmond region, so we're excited about the outcomes of this process and look for information back from BDOT in December or January of next year. We have a number of work groups that have been established by this committee or this board over the last few months, and Nicole brought it to my attention, and I like to share this to show how much we're working. When she started about a year ago, less than a year ago, there were four committees that she was given responsibility for. We now have 12, so we are doing lots of focused efforts on things like public transportation and Vision Zero and our STPC MAC funds and lots of other things, so we're excited about the opportunity to consider all of these things and the importance of them to the regional conversation, and we'll continue to fulfill our responsibilities to this board as we move into the future. The Work Program Status Report for August was in the packet for your review, and I wanted to remind everyone that this is in the new format, which we started with the beginning of this fiscal year, so it should be a lot easier to read, and it starts off, as you can see on the screen, with a summary of our FY21 Work Program Budget, and that shows all the different work tasks that we are engaged in this year, ranging from the Long Range Plan to Transit to Systems Resilience. So, lots of different focused areas, and you can see where the priority areas are with the amount of funding that is dedicated. And then, as far as the work program, each task is then highlighted with a table at the top showing what was billed during the month in question and the percent of funds expended overall from the work program. So, we are right on track with all of our work efforts, and the effort is there from staff, and I commend them for their hard work. Let me scroll to the bottom of this. Okay, the other items that I would bring to your attention in the secretary's report, I'm going to share quickly a presentation that was given to us at our Community Transportation Advisory Committee. This is from our colleagues at the National Association of NPOS based in DC, and we have been working with them very closely over the years. I've got a great relationship with the staff over there, and they gave the CTAC a special update on federal legislative efforts and what's happening at the federal level. So, as you can see on the screen, the CARES Act, we all know, was signed into law last March and included a number of transportation components, including $25 billion for transit infrastructure grants distributed via formula, airport grants, essential air services, and $492 million for the Amtrak Northeast Quarter. The HEROES Act was $3.4 trillion passed by the House only in May and included a number of transportation components. The Senate was considering a $500 billion bill that had a number of components as well. Those are things that are still working and in process. AMPO was working independently with the Lock Coalition to request additional congressional action on increasing funding to address local revenue shortfalls, sub-allocation of transportation funds to TMAs, and extending deadlines. That's the big thing for us to be aware of, especially for planning documents like plans and the Transportation Improvement Program and work programs, to make sure that there's enough time for NPOS around the country to meet these demands. Locally, our region is fine. We are up to speed on everything, but this is good to know that there is consideration for other NPOS around the country. The Surface Transportation Bill update, this is, the House and the Senate are both moving in different directions. The House bill is a lot higher and includes more dedicated funding than the Senate version. Reauthorization expired yesterday, and I did not check the ticker this morning. I don't know if anybody here today can provide an update, but the expectation was that there would be an extension of the bill for another year with the same funding levels as 2020, so that's something that shouldn't surprise anyone. There's very little motion at all at the federal level on considering any reauthorization or updates to the federal transportation bill. And then finally, there's lots of considerations at the federal budget level for continuing resolutions and what that might contain. So, that was the federal transportation legislative update. The next item on the agenda is the, just a few quick items on the CBTA. We have been working over the last month to develop a more comprehensive regional calendar, which is indicative of the three CBTA committees as well as all of the TPO committees, and making sure that we can identify dates for all of those groups to meet and have adequate time to reflect and consider the key information that each committee is required to review at this point, and we're very close on that. We've sent out a, close to a final draft of the calendar to CBTA committee members and authority members, and we're looking, it's looking like the next CBTA authority meeting will be at the end of October, and the reason for that gap between the August meeting and this one is that both the technical committee and the finance committee have needed at least two meetings in the interim period to consider all of the information that they need to think about and bring back to the authority with recommendations. So, both of the subcommittees are working hard, and we are gearing up for a second meeting of each one of those in early October so that they can consider things like the regional public transportation plan, the project prioritization process, and those kinds of things, as well as all of the organizational documents like banking agreements and financial services and those kinds of things. The final item under the secretary's report is 5E, and that is dealing with virtual meeting platforms. Chairwoman Page mentioned earlier that we have had and continue to have issues, seems like on a monthly basis, with GoToMeeting, and these, I think this all came to a head at the August 27th CBTA meeting, the organizational meeting, when it was readily apparent to staff and those in the room that the mechanisms for people to participate virtually were somewhat limited and very technical in nature, so we are making the transition to use the Zoom platform in conjunction with YouTube so that we can hold meetings of this body and stream them live to YouTube for observation by anyone who is interested in the meeting topics. This will eliminate any issues we have had with muting and unmuting and audio feedback and should clarify some of the public participation questions we've had, as well as make it easier for members in those with speaking roles to participate remotely. We have utilized this for both of the CBTA TAC and the Finance Committee in their meetings in September, and it's worked very well, and we're excited about bringing this service to the TPO committees as well from this point forward. So, for your information, the next TPO meeting will be using the Zoom platform, so you will each receive a personalized link to access Zoom before the next meeting starts, and it will also be, as I said, livestreamed on YouTube so that anyone else who wishes to observe and listen can go to YouTube, to our YouTube channel for Plan RVA and watch the meeting at that point. We will still be providing opportunities for public involvement and public input on the process. They will change slightly from what we are doing now, but we will certainly provide advance notice to anyone wishing to be a part of the process. Madam Chair, that was quick, and I spoke a lot. I'd be happy to take any questions if anyone has any at this point.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
John Hodges?
Yes, Mr. Hodges.
Mr. Parsons didn't mention that, but the Ashland Trolley Line ribbon cutting in the report was rescheduled due to the inevitability of the governor. That ribbon cutting will be Wednesday, October 21st, at Carter Park at 1:00, and we welcome anyone interested in attending.
Okay, it will be at Carter Park?
Yes, that's a park in Ashland, off Ashcake Road, and just north, well, it's the terminus of the Trolley Line Trail and the Ashland to Petersburg Trail.
All right. We ask that everyone will put a note on their calendar, and your attendance would be deeply appreciated by the Town of Ashland and the TPO.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Parsons?
Yes, ma'am. Just on Mr. Hodges' comment, I believe there is an invitation. I was sent it by Ashland, so if people would like to RSVP, please let me know, and I could send you a copy of the invitation, as long as that's okay, Mr. Hodges.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Item B1 is our Smart Scale Round Four, Local Project Endorsements, Mr. Bush.
And Mr. Parsons, kind of the screen sharing.
And Mr. Parsons kind of does screen sharing. Okay, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is the local smart scale project endorsements for round four. The brief overview, smart scale is the statewide prioritization process for transportation funding. It's on a biennial cycle, so there's applications every two years. As Mr. Parsons just mentioned, the most recent application cycle closed on August 17th. There were applications from local governments, from GRTC and from the MPO itself. Some of those local and transit agency projects require an MPO resolution of support as part of the application. Given the COVID situation, the deadline for that resolution was extended. Instead of being due in August, it wasn't due until the end of October. So that's why we're bringing it to you today. So the requirements are laid out in the technical guide for smart scale. Essentially, for locality projects, if it's on a corridor of statewide significance, it requires a resolution of support. Or if it's any of the other types of projects, regional network, urban development area, or safety, it requires a resolution if it's not consistent with the adopted long-range plan for the region. That's the MPO's long-range plan. For public transit agencies, it's similar. They require a resolution from a relevant regional entity for either of their project types, and then specifically notes that the MPO must endorse it if it's not consistent with the long-range plan. We took this item to TAC last month, and TAC's recommendation was to go ahead and endorse all of the applications in the region. That way, we make sure we're covering all our bases, and we're not leaving somebody out that needed a resolution of endorsement and support. TPO staff doesn't have any problem with this approach. We feel like it is conservative. We're covering all our bases. The requested action today, whereas all smart scale projects within the MPO area not included in or consistent with the constrained long-range plan require resolution and support from the RRTPO Policy Board, whereas all transit agency projects within the MPO study area require resolution of support from the RRTPO Policy Board. Whereas all locality-sponsored smart scale applications addressing needs on corridors of statewide significance also require resolution of support from the RRTPO Policy Board. Therefore, be it resolved that the RRTPO Policy Board supports submission of the following locality and transit agency projects in the MPO study area for smart scale round four. And the resolution has a table that looks like this that goes through all of the projects. There's 40-something projects, so I didn't list them all here, but they are all in your resolution in the agenda packet. That concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for the presentation. Being no questions, comments. Action today is to support the locality and transit agenda smart scale applications. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Ad O'Bannon.
Madam Chair, Cynthia Newell.
Ad O'Bannon, second.
Thank you. Moved in properly, second, and we accept this resolution. Nicole, will you poll the members, please?
Yes, ma'am. Before I do the roll call, I just want to acknowledge that Ms. Dean has joined us from RMTA, and Mr. Nordvig, I believe, is with us as well from Powhatan. So I will include them in the roll call. The board will now be voting on item B1, smart scale round four, local project endorsements. Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Hi.
Mr. Winslow.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
City of Richmond, Ms. Gray.
Hi.
Ms. Newbill.
Hi.
Mr. Addison.
Hi.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Hi.
Okay.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Hi.
Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Hi.
Mr. Thornton.
Hi.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Hi.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Nordvig.
Hi, good morning. We had no electricity in my neighborhood till about 15 minutes ago, so I vote aye.
Thank you. We're glad you're here, Mr. Nordvig. Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation or Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for item B1.
Thank you. Item B1 passed. We move on to item B2, which is Connect RVA, the 2045 update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Salav Ariel, and I'll be presenting or providing a brief update on the Connect RVA 2045 Long-Range Transportation Plan. The Connect RVA 2045 is the federally mandated long-range transportation plan for the Richmond region. The last update I provided to this body was in May. The meeting had some technical difficulties, so our recorded presentation was put there in the YouTube website of Plan RVA. So the Connect RVA 2045 would be the vision for the next 20 years of transportation improvement in the Richmond region, which would include a vision plan as well as a constrained list of projects, which would basically be all the projects with the region would be able to fund based on the revenue projection provided by GRPT and VDOT. This will be the region's first performance-based plan, meaning that the LRTP will apply a systematic review of transportation performances to define the region's investment priorities. The scope of the work and schedule and establishment of the LRTP Advisory Committee, which spearheads this process, was approved by this board in October of last year. The LRTP Advisory Committee consists of members of the Technical Advisory Committee, the Community Advisory Committee, as well as people representing other agencies like Virginia Asian Chamber of Commerce, Bike Work RVA, RV Rapid Transit, and so forth. So just to give a view of our process, this is the diagram, which I think most of you have already seen. We have five or six phases in this plan. The first phase, obviously, is the transportation needs assessment in which we look for the issues which we had having in our multimodal transportation network in the region and then approve those issues. The second phase is a static direction in which we develop the vision, goals, and objectives for our plan. The third phase is the planning in which the issues which were listed in the task one would now be converted into logical transportation projects. And then what we'll get is a list of the universe of projects. The fourth phase, obviously, is the programming in which we look at the revenue estimates from VDOT and DRPT and develop a constrained plan. Finally, since the performance-based plan, we have to evaluate the plan for its performance for our public.
All right, so this is your secret number. I'm gonna give me a sec. I'll try and spike this Alexandra.
Finally.
Can I give him the background here?
Sorry, there was some disturbance in the background. And then finally, this Policy Board would be asked to adopt the plan. The plan is due to Federal Highway as well as Federal Transit Administration for of 2021. Throughout this process, we have a general public outreach process as well as a formal public review period after each phase is completed. So the first phase, obviously, is the transportation needs assessment, which we identified reasonable and local multimodal transportation issues based on congestion, safety issues, lack of interconnectivity, operational problems, maintenance issues, inadequate roadway or transit capacity, transit expansion, accessibility, as well as other issues like travel demand management, transportation system, residency, and economic development. This was adopted by the LRTP Advisory Committee in their May meeting. After this, I'm gonna skip the static direction for the time now. I'll come back to it later on, but I'll talk about the third phase, which is planning, because it directly relates with the first task, which is the transportation needs assessment. So this is a flow chart which shows the process from the issue identification to the project prioritization. So firstly, we identify the issue. We cluster them geographically. We establish the needs based on that. And then we have to have a mechanism to see whether the need has the magnitude to be in the long-range transportation plan. We develop a project inclusion guidelines for that. And then based on that, we'll have a universe of the issues would be converted into a universe of projects, which would be ranked and prioritized in our next task, which is programming. So the planning phase started with the development of project inclusion guideline, which is basically the distinction between the regional projects, which is drawn from federal code of federal regulations, and the difference between the programmatic and local projects as well. So for a long-range transportation plan, we want to have some definition for the region plan and only want to include those projects which have the magnitude to be included in the long-range transportation plan. Staff started the process of screening the transportation projects based on the transportation plans and studies recommendation. So if a STAR studies, if our IGR was completed by VDOT, those studies recommend projects. So staff just documented those projects as the first thought. For all the other issues, staff would be working with the project champions to develop the projects. The final objective, obviously, is a streamlined list of regional transportation projects for all transportation modes, which we'll be calling the universe of projects. And all the projects in the universe of projects would be scored, ranked, and prioritized for the constrained plan. So for the project champions can be said as like project applicants. For transit, obviously, GRTC localities, as well as RRTPO would be the project champions. For park and ride, Ride Finders, RRTPO localities. For active transportation, bike pair projects, localities, VDOT RRTPO. For any rail projects, obviously, DRPT. If there is any project related to the airport, the Capital Region Airport Commission, freight, intermodal, or Richmond Marine Terminal projects would be RRTPO, VDOT, and Richmond. System Resilency, RRTPO and VDOT. And highways within, non-interstate highways within the localities, the localities would be the champion for that. Any highway project which is multi-jurisdictional or it's an interstate or freeway, VDOT would be the champion for that. Staff will work with VDOT to develop the projects. Any replacement or rehabilitation for the bridge projects in the region, VDOT would be the champion for that. And if there's any project in the downtown expressway, RMTA would be the champion for that. So staff is working on that. The plan is to come up with some list by the end, by early November, and then come back to the LRTP Advisory Committee for their comments, and then go to the public formal review period for 15 days and then come back for the LRTP Advisory Committee for the approval around December of this year. Now I come back to the second phase, which is the static direction. So basically, we develop vision and goals for the LRTP in this phase. So the vision statement will describe Richmond region's transportation aspirations, one-size manner, focus on what is important, and then will provide a foundation for all other aspects of the plan, basically the goals and the objectives. The goals will describe a series of desire and states for the region's transportation system informed by the vision. We have certain federal guidelines to follow. We need to address the 10 federal planning factors from the FAST Act, as well as seven goals from the MAP 21 Act, federal legislation, which came before the FAST Act. After we develop the goals, we have to develop the objectives, which basically describes the specific measurable statements that support the achievement of the goals. And then there would be performance measures for each goal, which is basically a technical mechanism to monitor progress towards the objectives. So the part of objectives and performance measures become very technical. So the basic framework which staff has developed for this is the first first is the introduction and discussion of this topic in the LRTP Advisory Committee meeting, which was done in May as well as again in August. And then go back, go to the public engagement. We, and I'll come back to this later on, we have finished three. We are, we finished two surveys, and one survey is still going on. Once we have all the survey results, staff would synthesize the survey and then develop the vision and goals based on public input, which will come back for LRTP Advisory Committee discussion and approval. And then once the LRTP Advisory Committee would think that that's fine, we go for a 15-day formal public review period, and then we come back to this board for the approvals of the vision, goals, and objectives. So this was the first vision survey. We asked the public to tell us about your transportation vision for the Richmond region in one or two words. The figure below is the word cloud. Words with most hits are bigger and larger. So what we can see is the words popping out equitable, green, carbon-free, multimodal, safe, connected, as it is in our theme. Those are some of the hit words from the survey. The second survey was the reasons, goals, and priorities survey, which went live around June 24th and closed about one and a half months after that. We had a, this survey was a tremendous success. This was viewed by almost 7,000 people, and 501 people completed the survey. So look at the participation for this survey. Participation is throughout the region with about 40% of responses coming from the city. If we look at the zip codes, only a few zip codes within regions is missing. Probably a few zip codes in western Goochland and northwestern Henrico, Hanover County are the only ones which were missing, but the participation was throughout the region. This is what we came out from the survey. The priorities, we had asked about the six priorities areas in which we need to address for any transportation projects. So based on the mean of the responses we got from a scale of 1 to 5, safety ranked highest with 4.4, then environmental quality, accessibility, followed by land use, economic development, and the least important among the six was congestion in the Richmond region. We also asked an open-ended questions, asking the public to share their transportation priorities. And we got 211 responses for this. This one, which is presented in this slide, is just a sample of that, but we can see that with the highlighted words that the transportation priorities are multimodal in nature. So we can see a mass transit system, a metro rail, a rail line, improvements to interstates and expressway, expanded Richmond International Airport, bring back Richmond speed cars, element tools, expanded ride shares, intermodal safety in railway crossings and bike lanes. So it's, the priorities are throughout. It's not just focusing on the highways. And staff are still working on, looking at all these responses and synthesizing that, coming up with priorities based on what we get from the public. And then the final survey, which is the vision, goals, and strategies survey, went live on August 25th. It's closing, it is closing around midnight of October 11th. So far, we have like 800 completed survey, and it's counting. The target is if we can achieve 1,000 people answering the survey, that would be great. The survey is still open, and I would request you, if you haven't filled in the survey, please do so. And if you want to pass this again to your constituents, please do so. This will be closed in October 11th. And then after that, staff will work on synthesizing the results of the survey as well and combine with the previous. and combine with the previous survey and come up with the vision and goal and the aspirations for the reason and then come back to the LRTB advisory committee for the discussion. That's all I have for today. If you have any questions, I can answer them now or we can, I'll be happy to follow up after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Do we have any questions or discussions?
Just one, this is Pat O'Bannon.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is this? Is this on the website? Is that where we get a press this presentation, a copy of this presentation?
Yeah, this presentation after this meeting will be posted in the LRTP Connect RV website as well as Plan RV website. You can see this presentation along with the meeting page, along with the agendas and other items as well.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation this morning. And we can go to the website to look at the presentation following this meeting. I'm moving along to item B3, which is the MPO boundaries and rural jurisdictions, Mr. Parsons.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. I am sharing my screen and let me put the so yesterday evening, we sent out updated memo, which is on the screen now for those able to see it. And I apologize for the late distribution. We've been working for the last couple of weeks to try and put some information together. If you recall, at our last policy board meeting, Mr. Williams requested that this be put on the agenda for discussion, to discuss the TPO boundary. And we wanted to start off with some research to to talk about what's happened in the past, what the TPO is considered and provide some some background information and context for, I think, our new situation now with with the created CBTA and and those kinds of new details that that should be considered along in the conversation. So and I'm just gonna to quickly go through the memo due to its late distribution. The consideration was to to think about the opportunity to expand the TPO boundary now to match both the plan RVA boundary and the CBTA boundary. They both match the boundaries of the planning districts, the planning district 15. I have had conversations last week and this week with Dan Lisi, the former director of transportation here at Plan RVA, as well as Richard Duran, who is our liaison with federal highways to get some feedback on on the prospect and see if there are any to start off, are there any major red flags in even thinking about a boundary change? So this memo presents some of the the information that I found back. And I think that a good good background is is that back in 2014, I believe, was the last time that this this boundary discussion was held. And that was when Dan was the director of transportation and Mr. Williams was the was the chair of the policy board. And at that time, there was, there was a lot of of good conversation held. And I was able to go back and look through the the meeting minutes and and reporting information and have included that in this memo farther down. But I think that the first thing to note is that there are a number of factors to include. The first is that it is within this this board's jurisdiction to to expand the boundary from time to time to adapt to the growth of the region. So it's it's not something that is that is unheard of, it happens. The second item is that the metropolitan planning area is required to be evaluated following every decennial census. So as a as a board, we would have to do this regardless, following the 2020 census. For our timeframe, that would likely be 2022, once the the all the data is tabulated and presented in a format that is is useful to the public. The third item is the expansion of the NPA to include all of our rural jurisdictions like Charles City, Goochland, New Kent and Palatine present some some additional considerations. The first is that the TPO boundary would match the boundary of Plan RBA and the CBTA and could help to increase public awareness and understanding of what the TPO is as well as as what our responsibilities are and how we we meet the additional demands of of regional planning through the plan RBA and the CBTA. It would provide a uniform boundary for all of the organizations so that it would be less confusing to the public and provide some more context. The second item there is that currently RSTP and CMEC funding is available for projects within the NPO boundary. It is not available outside of that boundary. So expansion to match the planning district boundaries would make RSTP and CMEC funding available for the entire geographic area of the four rural jurisdictions. The other item to note is with the change to the to the planning area, there is a question about rural transportation planning assistance. Right now, we get roughly $58,000 annually to plan RBA to assist that is supposed to be dedicated to assist rural jurisdictions with with transportation planning efforts. And we have used that, I think, to to great utility in the past to provide specialized plans and services to New Kent, Charles City, Goochland and Palatine. We don't know if the at this point, if the if the planning area was was expanded, would that rural planning money be unavailable? So that's that's something that that we would like to dive into a little bit further to assess whether that that planning funds, the planning funds are gone or not. If the if the boundary expands or if we would still be able to utilize this. That does impact staff time if those funds go away at our office. So that's something that we want to consider when we when we can think about the expansion. Following this, there are other, I think, were groupings of information that I found in my research. The first of which is the section from the kind of federal regulations, which dictates how to designate metropolitan planning area boundaries. So we would want to look for what the what the reason would be to expand the boundary. And in looking through the the documents, the highlighted section here is item D says that NPA boundaries may be established to coincide with the geography of regional economic development and growth forecasting areas. We feel like that is probably the most likely reason to expand the boundary. And regional economic development and growth forecasting areas can be can be deemed to be the the PDC. That is one of the one of the uses of, or one of the purposes of the of the planning district and plan RBA is to provide those types of services. So following the the CFR section, we I provided language from the Regional Cooperation Act, which is, as you know, what Virginia is to establish planning districts. And I've highlighted sections of the Regional Cooperation Act that talk about what what these planning districts are supposed to do, such as economic and physical infrastructure development, transportation. Further on, general duties of planning district missions to conduct studies on issues and problems of regional significance, to identify mechanisms for the coordination of state and local interests on a regional basis, to conduct strategic planning for the region, to collect and maintain demographic, economic and other data concerning the region and member localities and act as a state data center affiliate in cooperation with the Virginia Employment Commission. All of these things point towards that federal requirement for the planning area boundary that it can coincide with economic development or data forecasting purposes. I included a brief section here from the Federal Highway Administration about the process for preparing and submitting adjusted NPA boundaries. As I said earlier, we would be required after the census to to address this, but there is no reason why it couldn't be done at the at the request of the the policy board at any time. And then finally, I wanted to include some information from back in 2014, which I found in in researching the minutes. There was a, those of you who were on the board then, I know a number of you were, there was a four step proposal, which was presented. And step three was dealt with expanding the NPO study area. So I pulled the slides from that presentation and included that for for your information. And it really, it reinforces what I've already discussed this morning. It's an agreement between the governor and the NPO. It includes must include at least the existing urbanized area plus the contiguous area expected to be urbanized in 20 years. Our boundary right now includes that urbanized and expected urbanized areas. So it wouldn't be an issue to expand it past that. And again, may coincide with the geography of regional economic development and growth forecasting areas. The and as I said earlier, some of the problems that were noted in 2014, it could be confusing to the public if the boundaries are changed or are different like they are now. The recommendation back then was to expand the study area to include the entire Richmond region. And you can see that back in 2014, we received the same exact amount of rural transportation funds. So those funds, funding levels have not changed. But the question existed at that point as well. What would happen to to those those funds available to the PDC for rural transportation specific purposes? And I'm not going to read through them, but I included the minutes from September 5th of 2013, which accompanied that PowerPoint presentation and talked about each of the four steps with step three highlighted in the discussion about the the NPA boundary. So with that information presented, the staff recommendation right now is is to to take all this into consideration. And our recommendation to the policy board is to refer this item to the technical advisory committee for consideration and to bring back a recommendation to you once more information is known, especially regarding the rural transportation funds, what the impacts are to the plan RBA budget and staffing and administrative costs. And if I think another item brought up in the executive committee this morning was are there going to be changes in in local dues or allocations if the boundary changes, especially for the four rural jurisdictions? So all those things still need some more homework. And staff's recommendation right now is is to refer this to the tack to to bring you back a more a more complete report and recommendation.
Mr. Parsons, David Williams. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
You're fine, Mr. Williams.
As I said in the executive committee meeting this morning, I hope the technical advisory committee will take into consideration the desires of the rural counties that are the recipients of these studies. You know, how much do we actually value that versus actually being part of the region? That's the question. And I hope that will be considered. And you know, that you will seek the input of the rural counties on that issue.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think this is Neil Springer, Goochland County. I just wanted to thank everybody for actually taking this into consideration and bringing it up at this time. I know there's a lot going on, which is important for us to study, so thank you.
Madam Chair, Kenova Peterson, Hanover County. Just a question, we had 58,000 annually in rural funds, which basically is utilized by Plan RBA to provide services, planning services for the these these four four jurisdictions, as I understand it. If this were lost through expansion of the NPO, that would not prevent these four jurisdictions, though, from still contracting with Plan RBA to provide the studies that they feel are critical to their development, is is that correct? So I'm not too sure that it's really a loss to Plan RBA as much as it would be a choice of the smaller jurisdictions as to their need for the various studies.
Madam Chair, David Williams, I think Mr. Peterson makes an excellent point.
I am sitting here trying to think of I'm sitting trying to think of the number of studies that New Kent has had through through the through the boards to to even utilize the the amount of funding. So maybe, Mr. Parsons, you can send me that information. Since I'm sort of new to the board after all of these years, I wasn't a member in 2013 or 14. And so I think that would help to know how many studies over since this plan was discussed in 2013 until date. And I have to agree, if like all of our other studies, you know, we we vote and we pay for them. So that might be something in consideration. I would ask that that Mr. Williams, especially your concerns or your comments, that you would make sure that you forward them to the tack for their next meeting. And so that we know that that they are brought up and discussed in the meeting. Are there any other questions or discussions on this matter?
Miss Page, this is a this is chat, I just wanted to provide some 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 clarification. We'd be happy to to do some research and and bring back a list of the projects that have been developed. I think that to Mr. Peterson's question, the the difference here would be that the 58,000 provides the staff time so that so that the rural jurisdictions don't have to make any monetary contributions to the planning process. That would change if the 58,000 goes away, because it would it would put the onus on on the the member jurisdictions to 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 make the request and and help us help us find a way to to fund that the planning. But I I think that's certainly a possibility. So I'm not saying that that's that's not an option. But yes, we would be happy to to do some research and and bring back a list of the the work that's been done through the rural transportation program.
Madam Chair, David Williams.
Yes, sir.
The 58,000, that's, these studies are being done on a rotating basis, I believe, among the rural counties, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that would be New Kent, Goochland, Palatine and Charles City, is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Martha Heater. May I chime in just a little bit on this topic?
I'm hope, one second, let me see.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get, if you if you will, I'd like to get an answer to my question first. And that is, it's being done on a rotating basis, and that's correct. And it's being done among the four rural counties, is that also correct?
Okay. No, sir. Mr. Williams, this is Martha Heater. In 2016, we changed our process for how we assigned staff support funded through the rural transportation program. It's no longer done on a rotation. There is an open call to all four of the rural communities each year asking for input. The feedback that we got four years ago, when I joined the Plan RBA team, was that our cycle of rotation didn't align well with the timing for projects that the localities in the rural communities, the four jurisdictions that we're talking about, had need. And so we adjusted our process. And so each year, there is an open call. So I think Ms. Leduke has added into the chat back in 2014. That's the probably the last time a project was those funds were dedicated for staff time to support a project in New Kent County. I know that we've done projects that time in Palatine, most recently in Goochland, prior to that in Charles City County. So it has naturally rotated, but it has not. it's not designed to force the localities to follow a rotation.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Martha, for that information. I would like to see then, you know, what projects have been done since then, you know, since we changed, you know, where, you know, we had people that, you know, actually took advantage of the open call every year. Or we had years where nobody even requested a study. That would be my question.
Sure, we can provide that. And I would say that I would encourage this body to consider the value that expanding the study area would bring to the jurisdictions and the region. If you decide that you want to do that from a Plan RBA budgetary perspective, we, we will be able to adjust. So I would encourage the TPO to consider this for, for its face value. And if there is a fiscal impact of $58,000 to the commission, we will, we will figure out how to make that work. And I know that there was a question in the Executive Committee about whether it would result in an additional assessment. And our priority would be that it would, it would be a net neutral to the localities, if at all possible.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Martha, for that information. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair. Larry Nordvig, Powhatan.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I won't rehash, but I just wanted to second Mr. Williams' effort here. And I think he nailed it when he said that this is going to be affecting the rural communities. We need to be very much plugged in to this process. And, you know, we have issues and concerns that the larger localities don't have, and that some of them may surprise some of the staff members, actually. So good, close communication as we go through this probably will save a lot of time and effort. And for, for Mr. Williams, you know, if he's going to be submitting some suggestions, bullet points, feel free to put my name on the bottom of that, too, David. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Madam Chair. You know, historically, that some of our colleagues have been around at those dates that were mentioned by Mr. Parsons and others about the rural counties, the rural localities. So, you know, it's very important as we are now moving in a new direction for us to think in a collegial manner, but also that each locale is important. And over the years, I, my colleagues in the smaller localities have always had this concern. And this is concern should be for all of us. And I have always, over the years, said that each locale is important. So we must do our part. And let's even, you know, work towards that, you know, it's not just large and small localities. We're really now talking about how to enhance, you know, District 15, the region. And so I think that all of us who are visionary minded will understand this is how we should be reflecting our thoughts and thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, for your comments and your.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. I would like to thank Mr. Thornton for his comments. You know, he's, he has always been an advocate for this region. And I emphasize "region." And he has always been inclusive in consideration of small jurisdictions. So once again, I appreciate his comments very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Holland. I also join in thanking Mr. Thornton for his comments as well. I've been around as well for 13 or 14 years, not as long as Mr. Thornton, but hey, I came on the heels. He's absolutely right. We view this as a region, not as an individual part. And so, individual pieces, rather. So therefore, I think it's incumbent upon us to work together for the advancement and good of each and every jurisdiction, whether it's large, small, or otherwise. So I join my friend, Mr. Thornton, in concurrent and saying, let's look out for each other and realize that when we all win, we all will be better off versus one or two winners who might have, for example, population or size scope. So thank you as well. Thank you, Mr. Thornton, for that thought. And let's always think regionally, because we're in this together, either way we look at it. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. I can truly say that since my short tenure on this board, I can say from our first meeting and going through all the anonyms and all of this, that I have, I do see us growing.
In our meeting, about the fucking position.
I do see us growing together regionally. I think that all of us understand, through my military, we say that if we would unite as one, we are forced to be reckoned with. And I think that for our region to be a force to be reckoned with, we have to truly think regional. So it is a recommendation that we take the NPO boundaries and rural jurisdictions, that we take that to the TAC, asking anyone and everyone, especially you, Mr. Williams, myself, Goochlin County, that we will form questions or comments that we can refer to the TAC and truly acknowledge our desire for this process to start and find out what are the pros and cons and versus doing it now or after the census. What is, what makes the most sense and what's to have best benefit? So if we could do that, I think it's a recommendation. Do we need action on this recommendation? Or will you just take it to the TAC?
Madam Chair. I would recommend action.
Chair, we're tying a motion on a recommendation.
Madam Chair. David Williams. I'll make that motion.
Neil Spooner, second.
We have a motion and a second to take the NPO boundaries and jurisdiction, rural jurisdiction to the Technical Advisory Committee. Nicole, will you please poll the members, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board will now be voting on item number B3, NPO Boundaries and Rural Jurisdictions. Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland. Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Most definitely, aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Gray. Moving on, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Mr. Addison.
Aye.
Goochlin County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Moving on, Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation or Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
This concludes the roll call for item number B3.
Thank you. Moving on to Agency and Committee Reports. C1 is transportation agencies, starting with Mr. Mann with VDOT.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Sorry, not Madam Secretary, Madam Chair. CTB, last meeting update in September. The action on the location approval for Woolridge Road Extension in Chesterfield County was taken. It was a review of the Fiscal Year 21-22 Transportation Alternatives Program. Richmond District requested about $17.5 million through 25 applications. The proposed funding in Richmond District is about $7.7 million with 16 projects. Seven of those projects are in the city of Richmond, three are in Chesterfield County, and two in Henrico County. CTP action on that proposed funding will be requested at the October meeting. There was a presentation on the COVID traffic trends. You know, seen a pretty good drop in traffic due to COVID. So there was a good presentation on that. It's a bit of an interesting presentation on the transportation budget by the Deputy Secretary of Transportation. There's a couple bills in the General Assembly that would give VDOT additional funding flexibility due to COVID-related issues. The timing of revenue-sharing allocations could offset some of our revenue reductions if that is passed. So we're still waiting on General Assembly action on that. The next CTB meeting will be another virtual meeting. October 20th is the planned workshop, and the 21st is the action meeting. On smart scale round four, VDOT and OIP validation is still underway, expecting completion of that in December of 2020. And presentation to the CTB is anticipated in January of '21. On the six-year plan, no update on the six-year plan is currently scheduled. But keep in mind, all projects currently in the six-year plan are proceeding as normal. And on interstate studies, the 95, 64, and 295, all those studies are on schedule. Public involvement planned for late this year and early next year. Each study will, at the end, have both operational and capital improvement recommendations. That'll be presented to the CTB. And websites for those studies are virginian95corridor.org and virginia64corridor.org. And there's currently no public hearings or willingness posted for the study area at this time. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. And we will now have, are there any questions? We will now have a report from DRPT.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. A quick update from DRPT. We did take an action item to the Commonwealth Transportation Board in September to add a number of items to our current fiscal year 26-year improvement program. That includes transit operating assistance that'll carry those transit agencies through the second quarter of fiscal year '21. And that's funded at the same level as the first quarter. We did the same for our commuter assistance or TDM agencies and provided capital assistance for our human service agencies under the federal Section 5310 program. As Mr. Mann noted, the CTB is scheduled to meet later this month. We are anticipating that at some point, we'll develop a draft fiscal, fiscal year '21 six-year improvement program. Our program's a little different from VDOT, that we do an annual application cycle. So this delay that we've been going through, waiting for action from the General Assembly has certainly been something that's been a challenge for our partner agencies. But we do anticipate developing a draft at some point later this fiscal year based on new revenue projections and General Assembly action. The other big update from us this month is on the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority. As I indicated last month, DRPT is continuing to work on standing up the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, as was authorized during the 2020 General Assembly session. We did have members of the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority Board that were appointed by Governor Northam on Friday, September 18th. That does include two members from the Richmond region. And we remain on track to complete our agreements to finalize the CSX deal by the end of this year. That, of course, gives us the framework that allows, you know, for enhanced rail service from Richmond to DC and really for that service to double over the next decade. So very significant and a major work product for our agency. And finally, I'll just make mention again for Amtrak. Amtrak has increased their state-supported rail service. It includes service through Richmond. I happened to look last week. There are tickets that are available. They're quite reasonable, so it is a good time to travel by train. But we don't anticipate any additional service through Richmond returning until early 2021. And that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you so much. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Moving to C2, which is Community Transportation Advisory Committee meeting report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was, the report is included in your agenda packets on page 35, I believe. If anyone has any questions about that, we can address them. Otherwise, it's good information to, to, to consider.
Thank you. So we'll leave that to your reading pleasure. If you have any questions, discussions, we'll bring it up. Remember, comments. Moving to other business. Public comment period is now open. Have we had anyone to have any questions, discussion, concerns for us? Mr. Parsons?
Ma'am, we are not aware of any additional questions or comments.
We will now close the public comment period. And future meeting topics, D2. Is there anything that the committee would like to, what we'd like to put on for future meeting topics for November meeting?
Madam Chairman. John Hodges.
Yes, Mr. Hodges.
As Ms. DeBoole indicated in her presentation, the progress on the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority is moving ahead. I would recommend to the group that we have a update at an appropriate time on the status of project improvements like the Long Bridge that'll facilitate this. I think that would be of interest and timely.
Yes, sir. Do you have that, Nicole? Are there any other topics of interest for November?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Kenova Peterson here. I'm just curious, because we just sent the NPO boundaries to TAC, but I don't think we gave them any guidance as to when we expect this to come back to the Policy Board. Should we be, should we make, give them some direction there? And should, should that be November, December? How long? I'm not too sure how long it would take them to study this issue.
Mr. Parsons, do you have any guidance on this?
Yes, that's a great question, Mr. Peterson. We, the TAC meets next week. We don't have, have time to get that, not next week, the week after. We could potentially put that on the agenda for this October meeting, but it might make more sense to consider it in November. So with that in mind, if you wanted to request a recommendation for your December meeting or January meeting, that might be the most prudent.
Okay. So why don't we, on our November meeting, just ask for update or from TAC as to where they are? And they can give us a deadline or some kind of dates. Can we do that? Are you all with that, Mr. Peterson?
Madam Chair. I'm perfectly all right. I really think, I really think this is more for the, for smaller jurisdictions that are involved with this. I'm just pointing out that it was sort of left wide open and that probably needs to have something to keep it moving.
So, okay, thank you, sir. So I think we follow the guidance of Mr. Parsons, and we will plan to put it on at the summer meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other future topics for November? Hearing none. And we will move to D3, which are TPO member comments. Are there any at this time? Hearing none. And next meeting will be November 5th, 2020. And if no one has any, anything else to bring before this board, then we will stand in adjournment. Thank you all for attending and do have a wonderful and blessed week.
Thank you, Madam.